I've never been in one.
We're gonna call the meeting, daughter. We're gonna ask Councilman Cook to please lead us in prayer. Councilman Castile to please lead us in the pledge.
Okay, our financial blessing prayer. Dear God, bless the work of our hands, the work of our minds, and the work of our hearts. May each day be an offering of worship to you. May your goodness flow through our every deed, and may you keep us, shelter us, protect us, and feed us, that we may be blessed with the finances we need and have the love and grace to give generously to all those that are in need. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, members. We welcome you to today's budget review. This meeting is a departmental budget review session. If you wish to address the council, a green sheet should be filled out and given to the council clerk, Ms. Veronica Williams, seated to my left. I'm requesting that the first row to my left here be used for me to yawnly, and the right-sided auditorium be reserved for budget and finance staff. I'm also requesting that anyone who approaches the podium please state their name and title for the official record, and that's inclusive of departmental representatives. Lastly, food and drinks are not allowed in the auditorium, and cell phones and electronic devices shall be silenced from this point forward. This meeting is to address matters related only to the proposed budget document. Please request that all other matters specific to city parish government's business be directed to the administration and that it not be addressed at this public forum. The budget document has been posted on the website at www.lafayette.la.gov under Finance. Public comment will be held immediately following each budget review on matters related to that specific departmental's budget. All council members are reminded that three possible actions could be taken during the hearings. All council members are reminded that three possible actions could be taken during the hearings. All council members are reminded that three possible actions could be taken during the hearings. A council member may be proposed changing the budget by offering one of the following. So I think we clear, right?
It's been served.
Okay, alright. I just want, I wasn't stuck.
You took better wind.
Yeah. First activity you could take is a general amendment. This is when the entire council is in agreement on a proposed amendment. Another way of saying it, if you offer up an amendment at any one of these hearings, and there is no objection to that, it'll go forward as a general amendment. Keep in mind that an objection can be placed and offered at a later point, as long as our budget process is still in effect. The second activity is a separate amendment, and that's when council members object. So if you offer up an amendment and someone object to it, that doesn't mean your amendment is dead. That just simply means that it's going to have to be addressed a little bit more detailed and more precise, and you're gonna have to argue your point at some point. But if you want something to happen, you certainly need to speak up, and a council member can choose to object to that, and it simply becomes a separate amendment at that time. We're not gonna debate those issues at these public meetings today. They will move forward to be debated another day. So if someone objects to your amendment, we're not gonna get into debates at this point to try to see why, or who, or how. That'll be taken up when we move towards adoption, and hopefully some of which can be corrected beforehand. And the third item is a council member may also choose to mark an item or request an item for wrap-up discussion to allow time to receive additional information. So if you have a request, we have some already today that we're gonna put into the record. If you want some more information to determine what course of action you may wanna take in the near future, you simply request that information. Again, once you request the information, we're gonna move on, okay? You requested the information, let's wait for it to come. We're not gonna request information and debate and talk about it if the information is not readily available to us immediately. And we wanna try to really, really main tight to those limits. That's why I repeated myself three times. So again, you may make requests for information from the directors, the agency's head of, following your receipt, review of information. You may choose to come back and later perform one of those three options, and that's why we don't address those now. Once you get your information, it may move you to make an amendment, or it may move you to remove an objection to someone else's amendment. And we wanna keep those going throughout the process, 'cause it helps our staff tremendously, okay? It allows them to be really, really ready when we get to the end of this process. But even more importantly than that, it helps finance, as they manage this activity daily. At the end of each day they go and they manage what happened that day, it assists them in knowing exactly what they need to prepare for as we move toward wrap-up and adoption, okay? A few other announcements. Councilmember Jared Bellard is unable to attend today's review. He has prior business that he's not gonna be with us today. Councilman Kevin Nakken is actually en route, and he should be with us shortly. And we thankful that all other members are present in here. Normally, I will give a budget opening statement, but this year I've decided that I'm going to do my chair's statement at the end of the process, once we see all of what takes place over the next thirty or forty days or so. This is gonna conclude my comments and instruction at this time. I'll open the floor if there's any council announcements, any council announcements, before we get started. Seeing none, Mr. Do Yon, any administrative announcements at this time?
None at this time, sir, thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you for being here with us. Many of y'all know, like to just try to bring some clarity is that the budget that's before us has been prepared by the administration, the departments, and those who are present. I often like to remind people that it starts off as the administration budget, then it becomes the council budget, because we butcher it up. We take things out, we put things in. Lori would like us to not put things in without having a resource for that, but we address that as we go along, right Lori? And then, once we do that, then it becomes the administration budget once again to see we messed up too much, and they could take action, and then we move to adoption, then it becomes the people's budget at that point. So it's a really, really good fun process. This is actually my favorite time of year. When I first got elected, a former council member told me this, it was his worst time of year. This is actually my favorite, 'cause this is where things actually get done, and real decisions are made. So, we're gonna now move to our review of our first department. I'm gonna first go to Ms. Toobes for any opening comments and presentations. Then we're gonna ask each department head as we move along to come and make their opening presentation, and then we'll start with our page-by-page, line-by-line review. Ms. Toobes.
Good afternoon. The Parks and Recreation budget, operational budget, is pretty much a standstill budget. You may recall last year, we made a last-minute adjustment in transportation cost, because we did not roll the millage forward. Well, we are reinstating that reduction in transportation cost. I don't think they needed all of it, but you'll see when we get to that line. It just so happened that it is estimated to be offset by a decrease in uninsured losses, so therefore their budget practically remained the same as last year. It was less than a five percent difference. You'll see that the Parks and Recreation operating budget is $10.1 million. Of that amount, 3.9 million, or 38 percent, comes from the City General Fund unrestricted monies. 2.6 comes from the golf course fees and revenues collected in the golf courses. 2.8 million is from a dedicated citywide property tax for Parks and Recreation. They have another $373,000 from other service charges, and then the Parish General Fund kicks in $356,000. They're not asking for any additional new positions in this budget. And that's it.
Thank you very much. Members, just as a reminder, Mr. Do Yon, just know that all those papers that was left at your seats had this information on some of the overviews, as well as the requested, something we started probably about four or five years ago, the request that any line items greater than $500,000, I have million, be actually broken down so that you could actually see what's taking place in those line items, and there's no hidden agenda. So all of these documents are at your tables, the pro forma, as well as the charts for each department hearing that we're gonna conduct today. Alright, Mr. Boudreau.
Thank you. So, a pleasure to be here, to go through our proposed budget, and before I get into it, I just would like to recognize members of our Recreation and Parks Advisory Commission who are here with us today, and we have Member Judy Placer, Leroy Barrington, and Harold Porter. And then I'll ask the managers and staff to stand up so that you can identify with them. Again, Rakeisha Thomas, our budget analyst, Noreen Lannery, the director's executive secretary, Wayne Wells over at Abagolf Course, David Gary at the Wedlands, Todd Robertson at La Vauxines, Roy Hill, our Recreation Centers manager, and Mendel Vize, who works in Recreation Center supervised, maintenance supervisor. And we have a number of people who are associated with our programs that I think will address you later on.
Okay. We're doing something just a tad bit different this year, and we hoping that this allows us to be just a little bit more efficient. Members have submitted requests for wrap-up and follow-up, so we're gonna get those on the record, so that'll keep us from having to disrupt anything, and you could get those in front. So, and then I'll allow each member to speak to those requests individually. But for the record, we're gonna first start off with councilmember Nanette Cook from District Seven. One request is gonna be the cost estimate for tennis facility improvements at Thomas Park Recreational Center, inclusive of locker room restroom for visitors. The next is the cost for pickleball courts at the Como Recreational Center with lights. And these things will be submitted to you, by the way. The next is the cost of providing foot golf at one of our current golf courses for limited use during the week. The next is the cost of adding walking paths at current parks, suggested location, and asking for suggested locations at these paths. As far as operational requests are, basically, what would be a reasonable dollar amount expected for hiring more qualified teachers, rather than in the summer camps, to consider hiring certified teachers to work in summer programs and camps versus the current employees that are being utilized, students and retirees and otherwise. And give the revenue that is collected from summer programs after expenses. If there's any revenue remaining after expenses for summer camp, is there any profit to be identified? Councilman Cook, you're recognized.
Okay, thank you so much, Chairman. Yes, these are my request for information items, and yes, I'll probably need to win the lottery to get all of them, understand that. But I do think, first of all, I wanna thank you for everything that you do for our Parks and Rec Department. You work with very limited funds, and you have for years, and, you know, done a wonderful job. These are some things, I think, you know, looking to the future that we need to look into in terms of providing more programming, you know, versatility, more activities in the summertime especially, as well as year-round. And I saw some of the faces when they said foot golf, kinda wondering what foot golf is. Foot golf is actually, Baton Rouge has it, and I know we're not Baton Rouge, but it is soccer on a golf course. And I know the golf pros are thinking, oh my goodness, what is she trying to do here? But it would be, you know, something that we could look into, and we've talked about it already, just about limited times. And anyway, just another activity that wouldn't require a lot of upfront money to put into place. But, so these programs are just something, you know, some things that I'm really hoping that we can get a dollar amount from you so we actually know what we, you know, what we need. And then also, you know, we talked about the summer programs. It's so important, you know, to have good summer programming, because, you know, I'm not sure if there's a police officer here to confirm this, but I know in the summer, the more kids on the street, the more maybe crime we have. So it is, it's something that the city can really help with in terms of good summer programming. And we have those camps now, but from talking to some of the people running some of those camps, they just need a little more support in terms of staffing and just qualify, not that we're taking the students out of it, we still, we still need all those hands-on, but just maybe trying to offer a little better salary for some teachers that are looking for some income in the summer, and also maybe that are a little more mature that can help with, for instance, the therapeutic, you know, camp, that one in particular. But, but just, you know, that was kinda that request. So I don't want it to, don't want it to look like I'm taking those kids out of the mix. I would like to have them as well, as long as we can maybe provide some maybe stronger counselors in terms of, you know, teachers that were looking for something in the summer. But, but as far as, you know, all those requests, again, I just, if we can get a number as far as, so that we know when we start looking at the budget, maybe what we can put in, not all of them, I realize that, but if we just kind of start phasing them in, hopefully that's something we can do, you know, sooner than later.
Thank you, and I appreciate our exchange and meeting, and, you know, I've said on a number of occasions, that we really need to see, you know, how we redefine recreation in Lafayette Parish, and how we do that, and what funds we'll have available for that. So, yeah, we'll, we'll take all of those and follow up with you with some specific information, but including the soccer on the golf course, we'll take a look at that one also.
Thank you. I appreciate that. That's, that's all. Thank you.
Mr. Castile.
Thank you, sir. Yeah, I wanna see, I wanna see that soccer thing and golf thing. I can't go play golf no more, destroy their courses, so I need something else, something different. But I'm glad Nanette brought up these new ideas. For years, we knew recreation has been underfunded, and, you know, it's been kind of a repetitious thing every year, status quo, no changes. Well, we at that crossroads now. We got new council members with new ideas and no money for them. So it's time that we actually sit down and do the hard work and decide what we wanna do with recreation, with direction we want recreation to go in, in this parish, including the city of Lafayette. We know we have, we have some shortfalls on the parish side, we all know that, and we have some shortfalls on the city side. If you look at the millage, that doesn't provide enough to do what we wanna do. We have a lot of good programs currently, and we got a lot of good ideas coming up. So I suggest, as a council, we start thinking of ways of finding the extra revenue that we need to boost recreation. I've been saying it for a while, and now it's, we at that crossroads again, and we need to make a decision on how we're gonna do, and how important recreation it is to us. So I just wanna let the council know that we need to start really paying attention on where we're gonna find this extra funding to do these things. Good product, good programs, I agree with you a hundred percent, especially the golf one. I'm gonna get back into it. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. And again, we're gonna provide these to you in writing for the record. Next, we're gonna move to councilmember Pat Lewis from District Three. There's two requests for wrap-up information, and let me also remind the departments and finance that we don't have to wait until wrap-up. Of course, when you are in receipt of these, if you forward them, then the members are gonna know what actions that they may consider. But for Mr. Lewis, the first is the resurfacing of the parking lot at Martin Luther King Recreational Center. And Pat, I'm gonna go ahead on and say probably front and back, I would assume. So there's gonna be front and back, the resurfacing of the parking lot. And the second item is the installing a new pavilion at the Bayonne Park. And I think there's a cost estimate of $300,000, and would like to get confirmed numbers on those and have information provided back to him on those two requests. Mr. Lewis.
Okay, I'm on. Okay, yes, thanks again, Mr. Chair and Mr. Boudreau. Like Nanette said, appreciate all the good work you guys are doing with Parks and Rec. And Mr. Castile, I like the comment you are making, it's time that we do something with the Parks and Recreation. In the district that I represent, we just looking for, the ideas are not new. We have people that's coming back to the park, especially the Ballon Park. People are coming back, but they need a place to sit down, enjoy, and barbecue, and have family, organization or family reunions. And you look at these pavilions there, and now they are in the parable shape, so I wish we can find some kind of way to bring a new pavilion there. It would be very helpful. And the resurfacing of the Martin Luther King Parking Lot, front and back, people are using the Martin Luther King Parking Lots or the gym itself for a lot of activities. And they would like to have, you know, myself would like to have better parking facilities. The lots right now are pretty, you know, pretty bad shape. It need to be resurfaced. They're not in terrible shape, but whatever we can do to make sure when the people come, they can come and enjoy their hospitality, as far as inside the location, also on the parking lot. So whatever we can do to make this come a reality, I would appreciate that. I'm sure my constituency as well would appreciate that. Thank you.
Okay, now we're gonna move to councilmember Kunk, representing District Six. Got a couple of projects here that he would like some return numbers on. The first be in Shaguah Park, trying to bring it more neighborhood-friendly. He would like to see the installation of a small pavilion, walking paths, the upgrading of restrooms, soccer conversion, and security lighting. That's for Shaguah Park. Secondly, Oaklawn Park, again, becoming neighborhood-friendly and includes, and installation of walking paths. And finally, Nealon Park and baseball fields, addressing some concerns that he have on baseball fields. Mr. Kunk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Several reasons why I'm making these requests, and Gerald, you and I discussed some of those this morning. I think we need to rethink the use of some of these parks. For example, Shaguah was primarily a place where baseball was played over the years. No longer. We have a neighborhood which has very few sidewalks, but a lot of people walking in the streets, but no walking path in the, in the park itself. The restrooms definitely need an upgrade, standard cinder block construction. I think we aesthetically can provide a little bit better. The lighting, while Mr. Goto and I had discussed better lighting for soccer, I'm having second thoughts about that. I'd like to go just for the security purposes. I don't necessarily want to encourage nighttime activities right in the middle of the neighborhood. So taking Shaguah and repurposing that park to the needs of today. The same thing goes for Oakland Park, I'm sorry, Oaklawn Park. One of the things that we don't have there that we could put in is a walking path. It has good playground equipment, it has a pavilion, and that is very much a neighborhood park, just need to convert a little bit more neighborhood-friendly. And then Nealon, I think that the term that's used a lot, it's kinda tired. And then Neeland, I think that the term that's used a lot, it's kind of tired, it needs refreshing, a lot of fiscal issues need to be addressed, replaced, the field itself needs to be redone, a lot of things there, it's a major undertaking, but certainly I think it deserves some attention.
I've never heard of park being tired before. I get it.
That's a marketing term.
Yeah, people get tired at the park. The park was tired. All right, thank you, Mr. Kunk. And I think, lastly, member Liz Ebert, representing District Eight, uh, these, first is in a question form, when were the last time golf fees were increased? Secondly, uh, any ideas, yeah, any ideas for Gerard Park improvements, any enhancement to park activity and equipment? And finally, when was the last time fees were increased for camp, uh, summer camp fees? So you have two questions and one CIP matter. Ms. Ebert.
Me, it's pretty self-explanatory, it was just, uh, just curious on seeing the last time those two fees were increased. And then I didn't see, maybe I missed it, uh, looking for any kind of improvements on Gerard Park, that can either be told now if appropriate or waiting till later, that's fine.
I'll provide the dates on those increases, but as far as Gerard Park, usually you'll see a park improvement line item, and that would be inclusive of several different parks that we, we move around with 35 of those different parcels, rather than naming each one of them. Most of the times, it's usually about a hundred, $150,000 in that account, which when you spread it out, you, you're not going to get a lot of bang for your buck there, but um, we'll provide those other dates for you.
Perfect, thank you, thank you Chairman.
Thank you.
And if, if that was the last one, if I may, I just, um, if I could steal a page-
Hold on, Mr. Boudreaux. Mr. Kunk had one, one other thing he wanted to-
Gerald, also, I'd like to have some guidance or direction in terms of the opportunities to do public-private partnerships, and specifically, I'm referring to our partnership with the Kiwanis Club, and that's Gerard Park reminded me of that. Clark Field, excellent partnership there. I'd like to see what other opportunities, Canes apparently has partnership grants for dog parks. So if you could provide some details on those.
We will.
Thank you.
We will, and, and we're working with Canes, um, at a couple of our youth associations, but um, for, if we could just transition from the capital, I just, um, if I could steal a page from, uh, from Bruce's line there, the director's getting tired also, but uh, it's, uh, it's refreshing to, to have this conversation. You know, um, Councilwoman Cook spoke about Breck, and the difference between Breck and Lafayette is probably about 60,000, uh, $60 million that they put towards their park services. And we're not Baton Rouge, but I think we can do better. Included in that $60 million figure is, they, they pay everyone to get the job done. We have some people here today that you'll hear from later on who are volunteers, and those are the people really that, that get it done for us in recreation, the thousands of people who serve in our youth programs, they, they volunteer at our different facilities, and uh, if it's working with the foster grandparents or working with, with any of those, where I feel we've been disconnected, you know, and, and this is just, you know, a fact, we haven't incentivized them to continue to do. And, you know, as new facilities come up around the parish, we're, we're handicapping our volunteers by telling them, you have to live with what you have, and that's not, that's not right, and it's not fair, and they deserve more. So it is refreshing to have this conversation with you all, I know for some of you, and we've discussed this, last year was your first budget hearing, but we have to, we have to put these things on the table and we have to find out, like you said, we, we won't win the lottery, but how do we phase these in? And then Mr. Castile, your, your, your committee that have worked on needs assessment for the last three years have identified a lot of things parish-wide. And so rather than put those on the shelf, I think today should be the beginning of that process to, to move recreation to that next level and to, for us as a government to tell our volunteers, hang on, the better days are coming, and that we're not going to leave you to have inferior facilities, we're not going to allow you to, to volunteer and not be rewarded with, with programs and activities, and, and they deserve that. So um, I, I look forward to it, and, and on behalf of the staff, we'll, we'll provide the responses to those questions, and, and we'll also engage our partners, the volunteers, as Bruce just alluded to, because that's how we're going to get more partnerships, public-private partnerships, is when we engage with the civic groups and other organizations, because we won't have the dollars on the LCG side. So I just wanted to, to say that and say that it is very rewarding for me. December will make 34 years as a director in this government. It's, it's been a long haul, it's, it's heavy lifting to continue to tell employees to do more with less, it doesn't work, you just can't do it. You, you can't tell the volunteers, look at what Youngsville have, and you just, you go play over there, but you come home and you have rusted dugouts, the chain fences are broken. We can do more for our people, um, in, in Lafayette Parish. So um, I think it's going to take us collaborative effort on our part, and I think what I'm hearing today is, is that you're up to the challenge. We have three commission members here, and I'll take an opportunity to tell you that, that as you continue to appoint people to the Recreation Commission, I hope they would have that same vigor, that same get up and go to be a part of this change and identifying where we're going with recreation in Lafayette Parish as we move forward. Thank you.
All right, thank you. So with that said, members, we're going to go to page 185. Page 185. Starts off with the Director's Office. We're going to try to do it in sections, sometimes we're going to split the page in half, sometime we're going to only have a piece of the page, so we're going to try to, as, as in the past, but just as a reminder, migrate through this, through instructions. So let's start off with the first half, the Director's Office. Mr. Terrio. Oh, and I apologize, Mr. Terrio, before you get started, members, also as a reminder, when you're addressing a line item so everyone could follow along, please start off with the number code to the far left and, and give members some indication of where you are. Please start off with the number code to the far left, and if you're in the same, um, account, you could start off with the second number. So Mr. Terrio, you have the floor.
Thank you. 201, 6100, 70123-614. The other insurance premiums, as you can see, we have a decrease. So the actual in April was actually almost 207,000, but the proposed is roughly about 169. So we're looking at a decrease there, which is great, I just want to make sure we're able to cover it. Any reason why a decrease from the higher amount?
I think you'll see a decrease in insurance premiums throughout the budget. As I spoke Tuesday, we were able to find some savings in some of our catastrophic coverage insurance policies, so hopefully that is something you see throughout all the departments.
Okay, thank you, that's all I have for now.
Thank you. Still, Director's Office, let's move to the bottom half, operations and maintenance, Page 186, operation and maintenance continued. Mr. Terrio.
Miss Tubbs, line item 72600, the transportation, is that's what you were talking about earlier? We're looking at the, um, increase from 102,000 actual in April to 250,000.
Yes, sir.
So that was the offset that you mentioned?
It, if you look at the 2015-16 actual-
I see.
It was arbitrarily reduced last year in a last-minute effort to try to get everything to tie because the tax was not rolled forward, and we knew that we would have to address it later, and so we did go back and address it, but we may as well budget the amount they're going to need for next year at the proper level.
Do we know what the actual is as of today on that one?
Um, sir, we can get it for you pretty quick. 143,000?
Uh huh. 72600, uh huh.
And change.
Okay, that's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Page 186, athletic programs. Also top of 187, athletic programs. 187, swimming. Bottom of 187, tennis. There's a capital P at the top of 188, good on it, include that as well. Mr. Terrio.
2016, 13267,000, dash zero, the utilities, it may be a small amount, but back in April, we showed roughly $3,800 of a proposed $22,000 under utilities. What's our actual right now? Because that would be a very money portion. You can use some of that money for the, some of these other council members if that one's overstated. So we're halfway through at 7,000, if you double that, it's 14,000, so roughly you got almost 10 grand right there, guys. Just want to make that aware of that.
I, I wouldn't jump too quick, you know, a lot of these programs are seasonal, so when you look at, you know, your first quarter, your second quarter is during the winter months, so you wouldn't have the usage. So the, for instance, on tennis, you'll have your night leagues that will start up later in the year, and, and there might be some savings, and of course, where there is, we will, we'll do what we need to do, but just, just a word of caution, in some of these areas, it's a little misleading when you look at the, the seasonal aspect of some of these line items.
I said, and the reason I brought the question, because the actual at 1516 was roughly a little less, less than 13,000.
Yeah.
The actual in fiscal year 14 was 19,000.
Okay, that's all I have, sure.
And of course, just as a reminder, Councilman Cook actually had a request on a tennis matter as it relates to Thomas Park, so that's the record reflect. Therapeutic Recreation, 188, Therapeutic Recreation, page 188. Bottom of 188, top of 189, Centers and Programs, Centers and Other Programs. Mr. Terrio.
2016, 140, 50100, temporary employees, we're showing an actual in April of $20,000, budgeted for 289,000. What's the actual right now?
165,000.
So from the end of April, April 30th to now, we went from 20,000 to 165,000 in temporary employees?
Yeah. Again, again, that's your summer camps that have kicked in, um, your, your additional facilities at the recreation centers on, you know, weekends and special events, so yeah, that's one of those-
The cold months, you're not using as much naturally, in the summertime, everything's ramping up.
Your labor costs will go up and you have more activities, yes.
Thank you, that's all I have.
Middle part of 189, golf courses. You said soccer or golf course? Teasing Lynette. Golf slash soccer courses. Madame Ebert.
Uh, sorry, let's go back to line item 201614070546, Wi-Fi access. I realize that we're going to introduce Wi-Fi in our, in our parks, correct? Is that that?
No, it's not done.
Is that that? Is, uh, is this for all the public parks?
Okay, it's not done, um, we, we actually just started the process and, and Mayor Robideau has instructed LUS to work with us, and I think we're about a month into that. So I think we recently completed the, uh, the needs assessment and analysis in all the recreation centers. I think the next stop is the golf courses, and then they can come back with a plan, but we haven't developed that. Prior to, excuse me, prior to the mayor asking Terrio to work with us on that, we had already talked about doing something because of the number of events and activities in our facilities that prohibited us from providing that to people who are renting the facilities. So this will go towards whatever additional costs that'll be associated with the, the plan for next year.
And so this is for all of our city parks?
No, there's going to be some limits, some, some access, and we've had two meetings on it to discuss exactly, what, what we're targeting to start off with is all of the recreation centers. There, there's some privacy issues as it relates to open areas in the parks and everything, so we have not even gotten into the discussion as to what parks. What we do have the ability to, to, to request is for special events and special activities, similar to like festivals, international and stuff like that. We can have limited access for those, but not to have it open and running on 24 hours a day, seven days a week. But in our buildings, will be the first phase of that program where we, we at least have it available in the, in the buildings. The parks will be something different and later, and there will be limited access to that.
Okay, perfect. So it's going to be free, free Wi-Fi, we're not charging those who rent the facility to pay for any kind of Wi-Fi?
It'll be included when you rent the, the building, the recreation center, if you're renting a meeting room or the gymnasium, it'll be included in the cost of, of the rental. And so on those special events and activities, we, we haven't crossed that bridge yet as to how we're going to handle that on a one-time charge or something-
Okay.
Outside, but inside, there will be no additional charges.
Okay, perfect, that's all I have, thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you. Golf courses. 191, all the way through to Wettlers. Mr. Terrio.
Mr. Boudreaux, one quick question, I notice in a number of these different departments, line item, let's just use on 191, line item 2096172, 70700, we've got tourism, and throughout your budget, you got roughly about $45,000 in tourism dollars. What do you use that money for, for tourism in Parks and Rec?
So that would include, um, you know, our publications, so in this area, in the golf courses, being on the Audubon Trail, any, any items associated with that. Tourism captures a number of things and, and Finance probably can, can enumerate on those, but they're broken out, I know, like I said, some of the tourism costs, any, any special events or activities that are held, um, conferences, that, that's all part of tourism, uh, any, any fees that are associated with, um, the, the meals for conferences and stuff comes out of your tourism. What else am I missing, Melinda? Repeat with us, tourism? It's, it's, um, saying, any, any promotional events, um, our junior golf program, expenses for awards, awards that would come out of that would be tourism, anything in the area and the, and the centers.
You said warrants? For what, employee warrants comes out of tour? What?
Junior golf.
Junior golf, golf awards.
For the junior golf participants, uh, those come out of tourism. Advertising, yeah, there you go. Advertising, um, in this case, again, golf magazines, anything dealing with, with our recreation programs that are advertised in journals, in the state, uh- that are advertised in journals, in the state Recreation Journal, all of those. But it's a number of, in that category that fits in tourism. And it's a line item, like I said, in every one of the divisions.
What's the actual right now on tourism?
That one one, sorry?
Just go ahead and give me that one, yeah.
$199,900.
All right, thank you. That's all I have.
Okay, let's go to page 260. 260. This is going to be capital. 260. A little less than the quarter down the page. You're going to see Recreation and Parks Project, starting off with item number 127. And it goes through 145. Mr. Nakem?
Sorry, I'm late. Mr. Boudreaux, how you doing?
Good, thank you.
Looking at 141, it says Park Improvement Citywide. Is there any line items for park improvement parish-wise, AKA Scott Park, Judy's Park?
We, not in the proposed budget. We, for Scott Parks specifically, we had an intergovernmental agreement with them. That project is funded now and looking at a bid date of sometime early in September for the bid date, which will take that project hopefully into early part of next year so that it would be completed before baseball, softball. We've asked them to try to have that ready by March. But in this budget, we have, we were funded with normal capital for all of our parish areas, but no general park improvements in the parish.
What's the project or the bid proposal for coming up?
At Scott Park, that's the 100,000 that we received from the City of Scott. And so that'll do some handicap accessible areas, take some of the limestone walkways and turn that into full concrete. Some other areas around the restrooms. We're actually handling the project through the Public Works Department. And Scott has, Mayor Morrison has turned the money over and it's our project now to benefit the volunteers at Scott Park. So it's.
So Scott has given us the money?
Yes, yes. We've received that. And we had a budget allocation last year to match.
Okay.
And within the last 45 days, we received their 100,000. And so that project is underway. But we have no funds for 17, 18, for parish park improvements. Again, we do have funds in this budget for our normal capital and normal operational, which would be, you know, the sand, the dirt, the fencing, security lighting and those things that are essential for operations. But no targeted projects.
But I can tell my community in Scott that for sure, the bid process and stuff is going to happen sometime next year in regards to this project.
The bid, we're looking at a September, as late as a September, hopefully we'll get it later this month. That'll be the bid date. So 30 to 45 days later, that project should start. And it usually, you know, run about a three-month project. And so again, we targeted, we've asked them to complete that by March of 2018.
Okay.
With baseball, softball, you know, kicking up right after that.
Mr. Nakem?
Go ahead.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to point out where you could see that in the budget so you'd be comfortable. What you're looking at right here is city capital. That's from the city sales tax. But you'll see the Scott Park Improvements on page 253. The reason why we didn't add it to the list here is because there are no new monies in next year's budget that's being added to it. But you will see that it has a balance of $249,475.
Okay. All right. Cool. That's all I have. Thank you, Mr. Boudreaux.
Councilman Cook?
I'm looking at item 145, the Tennis Facility Improvements with a 319 to start with in their balance as of April. Is, what is the current balance? Is that pretty much gone? For the improvements?
The activities aren't as easy to pull up the current balances with. So we may have to get back with you with the current balance.
That's fine. That's it. Thank you. That's all.
So just amend her request with the request that she put in. You could put in a current account balance. And Councilman Cook, note that in this proposed budget, 100,000 was placed with $50,000 in future year budget. You may look at that as you consider what you want to do immediately. So, but if y'all could amend her request, that is going to be submitted to include the current balance in that account for this year's budget. Mr. Nakem?
Sorry to go back. In regards to that number you gave me of 249,000, do we, is there potential for any money to be left over based upon the bid and the construction? Or is that pretty much where?
That was the estimate, the architect's estimate.
Okay.
250.
Okay, all right.
But, okay, so the understanding is that it'll, if there is some money, it will stay in Scott Park. So it would not move from that line item. So.
Particular project?
That is correct. That's that. When they cut us the check, it was just to ensure that it would stay with improvements at Scott Park. We identified this project. Anything else, we would have the money and we would just notify them in writing as to what would be the next thing we wanted to accomplish.
Can you keep me up to date with the staff or somebody in Parks and Recreation?
Sure.
Touch base as the process goes along, where we at, so I can update the Sats and community of Scott.
Sir, sure will.
All right. That's all I have.
We'll move to page 281. Middle of the page, you're going to see Parks and Recreation. Bottom of 281 as well. Mr. Nakem?
Mr. Boudreaux, in regards to the lighting, I know sometime throughout this year, I've got a couple of calls. I think it was from a few associations in regards to lighting that we had to start charging for. Is that all figured into this Athletic Field Lighting? Item number 105, 189, 000, 186, 120. Says 25,000?
No, sir. No. So the calls that you receive is that if they were not directly, directly affiliated with one of our youth associations, then we treat them as the public. And when they rent, when they use the facilities, the charge for the use of lights was applied.
Okay, so this is pertaining to strictly our youth association?
That's correct.
Any private entity wants to do a fundraiser, whatever, we allow them, but then the lighting?
We allow them as a rental fee.
Okay.
Of course, for our youth organizations and our chartered associations, we do not charge them. That's our volunteers and extension of our programs.
All right. That's, I just, I know that came up a while back. I just wanted to figure out what's budget. Okay, that's all I have. Thank you, Chairman.
282. All right, we're going to go to page 308. This is the Manning Table. We're going to start with the Manning Table on 308. This is going to be in the middle of the page, starting in the middle of the page.
Excuse me. We have some more recreation capital on 283 and 284. I apologize.
That's quite all right.
Thought they had just approved it.
Go back to 283. And most of 284, 283, most of 284, additional capital for Parks and Recreation. And now we'll go to 308, to the Manning Tables. And that is in the middle of the page, starting with the Director's Office. And I think your performer reflected that there are no new employees here, right?
That's correct.
So there are no new employees in any of these divisions. But starting on page 308, middle of the page, all of 309. The top of 310. Okay. Don't seem to be any questions. Any closing comments, Mr. Boudreaux?
Again, I just want to thank the staff for their work, the managers. As you saw, it's actually, from an operating standpoint, a reduction in expenditures from the prior year. And then again, to our volunteers who continue to work and serve on behalf of you and this entire government in assisting us with recreation programs throughout the parish.
Thank you. We're going to now move to green cards for Parks and Recreation. Any green cards for this department?
Yes, sir. We do have five speakers, the first of which, Michael Rich.
And as you approach, for those of you maybe first times, you could go to either podium.
How you doing? Michael Rich, I'm the Executive Director for Lafayette Youth Soccer Association. Just here to support Mr. Boudreaux, Parks and Recreation. Great partnership that we have. They've always been very supportive. And ultimately, just to say thank you. I don't want to eat up too much time. Thank you for all that you guys do and the improvements that we've seen at Moore Park. Soccer continues to grow, grown about 1,000 kids in the last four or five years. And so those improvements with new fields and recently a playground, playground equipment, which is very nice. Much appreciated. So just wanted to say thank you.
And soccer and golf courses?
People ask all the time. You'd be surprised. We'll be ready to host a tournament, so.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Next green card?
Next green card is Edward. Coran?
Kurt?
Kernan.
Kernan, Kernan, yeah.
Probably the only Kernan in Louisiana. All right, so be gentle with me. It's my first time. I am the Trail Director and the Chairman of the Board for Mountain Bike Lafayette, which is the Off-Road Division of Bike Lafayette, which is a 501(c)(3) that is dedicated to education, awareness and safety for bicycles. Anytime you see one of those white bikes on the road where somebody was hit, Bike Lafayette put that up to remind people to pay attention. So anyway, Mountain Bike Lafayette is a full organization of its own with a board of directors. And we have enjoyed a great relationship with Mr. Greg Goutreau. Anytime we need something, we talk to him and he does his best to accommodate us. So I want to tell you a little bit about what you have because it seems to be the best-kept secret that we try to promote. We were established in 2012 and we were given part of Acadiana Park where nothing good happened. It's where all the people went to do bad things. And they said, hey, you want it, you can have it. And we took it and we had the place that was designed by a geologist for maximum use with minimum impact to the environment. And we have a grand total of 3.7 miles. And I hear everybody talking about Breckin Baton Rouge and they have us beat at six miles. But we're very comparable. And they're a lot, a lot longer established than this. So in the time that we have come in and done all this, we've removed a lot of criminal element. There, we have removed a couple vagrant tents with questionable items in them. There have been certain pieces of paraphernalia of questionable nature that we have found that they're just not back there anymore. Another important thing is that this has been designed to where it is ridable at any skill level because it is a multi-use family park. If there's something that is challenging, there is a bypass. If there is anything that there is no bypass for, go slow, you're fine. Go fast, you can have a lot of fun. And we actually have such a wide, a wide range of users. We have everybody from people on $10,000 bicycles. And it's hard to believe that somebody had spent $10,000 on a bicycle. But we got them out there and we've got, you know, Grandma and Grandpa that dusted off the old Murray Cruisers from way back when. Something that is also really great is that we have people out there that are just trying to get their health back. Louisiana's a great place. Obviously, I'm not from here. You can tell by my accent. But we have all kinds of opportunities for community and fun and things like that. Usually involve eating a lot, drinking a lot, having a real good time. And as a result, we can get a lot of problems from, you know, not having the places for activity. I've seen countless people trying to get their health back out there with, you know, mother and son going for pulmonary things. I'm running out of time here and I've got so much more to cover. We share a space with the Disc Golfers, but we have put up barricades to keep ourselves safe. Recently, we had some vandalism out there. And this is quite possibly the best thing is that we put up on the internet that we had vandalism and boy, oh, boy, was the public outcry with us. We got volunteers, contacted Greg, got what we needed, fixed it in two days. And there were people that, you know, when we reopened the trails, I thought they were going to start to cry. They were so happy. You know, that's just really the big, the big thing here is that for just the price of materials, you're getting a great return on your money. Because this is a spot, as more and more people find out about it, they say, I can't believe this is here. This is just coming, yeah, it's only been here since 2012. So, you know, currently, because nothing happens unless it's on Facebook, you know, we've got 2,112 followers. We have a huge community of people that are just nothing but enthusiastic about the trail system at Acadiana Park. And I just want to thank you guys so much for supporting it. And I'm out of time.
Thank you. Next green card, please.
Bill Phillips?
Good afternoon. I look forward to these budget meetings every year. My name is Bill Phillips. I'm the, with the United States Tennis Association. I cover the state of Louisiana for the last 18 years as a consultant for programming and business models for growing tennis, the lifetime sport. Prior to that, I was a teaching professional for 25 years, so I've been in the industry a while. Lafayette is a great place to live. Lafayette is a tennis town. If you look at our city versus other cities in the South in terms of USTA membership density, we were one of the most densely populated tennis participating towns in the South. And I've had a long-term partnership with Gerald and Greg at Park and Rec. And they are tremendous partners. And I'll echo what Ms. Cook said, that it's amazing what they are able to do with the limited funds and resources that they have. But they've been a tremendous partnership. And as of late, I just recently met with Greg. And we are, the Community Tennis Association here, which is a local arm of USTA, has formed a partnership with the city of Lafayette Park and Rec to enhance. a partnership with the city of Lafayette Park and Rec to enhance the programming that we have at the existing parks, particularly Acadiana Park, Bowls Tennis Center at Beaver Park, and Thomas Park, we have obviously issues with infrastructure with these facilities, we are behind the curve as compared to other areas of the state with public tennis facilities, and I hope that we don't have to rely on what's happening in Youngsville and Broussard, because they have very, very nice facilities, but we're not able to bring large events here anymore because of the condition of Bowls and the condition of Thomas Park, we have a great relationship with the schools, and we have a new product that is being marketed that will solidify partnerships between schools, community organizations, and tennis facilities, that those of you that wander onto ESPN and happen to watch the US Open in the coming month, it's a new youth product called Net Generation, and it will become, what we'd like to call it, is the amazon.com of youth tennis, where it's one-stop shopping for parents, for tennis professionals, for school districts, and for any other types of partners, and it'll be a generic, it won't be the USTA's product, it'll just be called Net Generation, and we will have the ability to have formal relationships between Park and Rec facilities or clubs and schools and other organizations, if a school becomes a partner, for instance, and they sign off on the contract, and they're connected to a facility, they'll get a thousand dollars' worth of equipment to promote in their physical education classes, and a laptop or a notebook that has all of the curriculum that has been put together, loaded into that, so that they can teach tennis as a physical education unit. The last thing I have to say, as an advocate for our sport, besides the fact that it's a lifetime sport, the children who play tennis generally make better grades, generally will go to college, generally have better conflict resolution skills, networking, and social skills, and we, I have played all kinds of sports all my life, from golf to baseball to other sports, and it's wonderful to see, when I go to facilities, I was just at a facility in Baton Rouge where two ninety-three-year-old gentlemen were out there playing, and they play every single day, so there's a lot to be said for getting into the sport, playing it, perhaps getting a college scholarship, perhaps making some great connections, Lafayette's a great town, I'm privileged to have been here, to have lived here now for twenty-nine years, and I wouldn't live anyplace else, so thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ms. Cook?
I just want to tell Bill, before you leave, thank you so much for all you do for the tennis community, and I also want to put my name down for that thousand dollars and that laptop you mentioned, okay? Well, call me later, okay?
That's your other job.
For my other job, that's right, all right, that's all, thank you.
That ethics course. Want to be clear, that's for your other job. Next green card, please.
Mark Bruno?
Hi, how you all doing? My name is Mark Bruno, I'm a small business owner and resident of Lafayette, we have a transportation company in Broussard, and I've lived here basically all my life, I moved here when I was nine to the Broussard area, and so this is my home, let me just start by saying I wouldn't want Mr. Boudreaux's job at all, okay, because what I hear is the people here really want a lot out of their Parks and Recreation, and they don't have a whole lot of money budgeted to them, I also want to say what a great job these guys with the golf courses do, I don't know if y'all play golf, but if you don't, you need to go visit our three municipal golf courses, they are absolutely outstanding, as good in condition as the private courses in the area, some better. With that said, and speaking of the budget, and I'm not the sharpest tack in the box, I can promise you, but that pie chart y'all had up there, if I read it properly, said that's twenty-six percent of the budget for Parks and Recreation comes out of the revenue from the golf courses, is that correct? Did I read that right? So that point alone gets me to why I'm really here, is to say that that is an extremely important part of y'all budget, and these guys do one heck of a job of managing that money to create what they have there, I mean, they're gorgeous, give them what they need to do what they need to do, and you will see increases from tourism when people come to play the Wetlands in Vauxhall, Muni, and not just for tournaments, but to come here because they're that good, when they talk about the greens being that good, they're as good as La Trion for Oak Barns, absolutely, so they're doing a hell of a job, and it's real important to the budget of the Parks and Recreation, that takes that budget and spends it on a lot of things that we do not see a dollar benefit from, okay, not that it's not a benefit, it's just not a dollar benefit as they produce, so they're doing one heck of a job, it's unbelievable, I don't play Abert Park very much, so I went out there the other day knowing that I was gonna come out here, it's beautiful, it's absolutely beautiful, if you don't play golf, and you haven't been to the golf courses, go check them out, sit down and just look at it.